All right, it's seven o'clock. I think, call the meeting to order. Uh, this is the, uh, January twentieth, uh, two thousand twenty-five Thursday version of the, uh, Hermiston City Council meeting. And, uh, we'll call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. Looks like we have one absent. Uh, Ms. Dron is not available. I believe she had a prior commitment she had said last week. Uh, so could I get everybody to join me on a flag salute?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Mr. Smith, do we have any changes to the agenda that you're aware of? All right. So, um, seeing that, we haven't anything else. To begin with, uh, citizen input on non-agenda items. At this time, anyone wishing to bring anything before the council that is not on the agenda is asked to please do the following. One, limit comments to not more than five minutes. Two, state your name and address. And three, direct your comments to me or the chair of the center here. So with that, is there anybody that wishes to speak to the council? Please come up. Welcome.
My name is Michael Gibson. I reside at four ninety-seven East Highland Avenue, and I am a project manager for PDX. And yesterday morning, my HR lady got a phone call that her son was hit at a crosswalk in front of the school. He sustained serious injuries and is currently in the hospital now. I have a child that's gonna be going to that school next year, and that crosswalk right there is pretty dangerous. And a lot of people aren't really paying attention in that area, and I'm just wondering if there's something that can be done. Like the, 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 the smaller schools have people that go out and cross the, you know, street and stop people, the traffic when people are crossing the streets or even the street light. Is there something that can be done about that?
It's been being talked about for a very long time. Uh, unfortunately, the, the cost of putting in a street light is very, very high.
Right.
Um, as for putting people out to basically crossing guards, that would unfortunately fall to the school district if that's a thing that's not something that we as a city can do. Um, you know, obviously, we're very sensitive to the fact that, that someone was hurt, and it is unfortunate. And, you know, I mean, it's, it's a difficult situation that, you know, short of being able to throw a very large sum of money at it.
Yeah.
At this point in time.
Well, I just wanted to bring that to you guys' attention, the concerns.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, we will move on to the next, to the consent agenda items. We have consent agenda items A through H. Is there any council comment on a gen- consent agenda items A through H? Seeing none. Uh, are there any items that we need to be removed or moved to be discussed later? Okay. Uh, are there any public comment on consent agenda items A through H? Seeing none. Uh, can I get a motion to approve consent agenda items A through H? Okay. Okay, it's been moved by, uh,
Alan Hayward.
I'm sorry, Hayward. Wow, that just lost it. And councillor Meyer seconded, uh, roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. I apologize councillor Hayward, that was embarrassing. You're okay. Okay, no items were removed at this time. Uh, we'll move on to public hearings. A supplemental budget hearing for fiscal year July one, twenty twenty-four through June thirty, twenty twenty-five uh, will be in conjunction with resolution, uh, twenty-three fifty-four. Okay, so as this is a hearing, are there any declarations of a conflict of interest from the council? Okay, seeing none. Uh, hearing guidelines will now be presented by city staff. City manager Smith.
The city council is holding a public hearing for the supplemental budget for the fiscal year July first, two thousand twenty-four to June thirtieth, twenty twenty-five. The city council will take public testimony on this issue and make a deci- decision at this meeting. The hearing process will begin with a staff report followed by public testimony. The council requests that all people wishing to testify give their name and mailing address before testifying. People wishing to testify should limit testimony to not more than five minutes unless a longer period is provided by the city council. Written testimony will be accepted. After everyone wishing to testify has had an opportunity to speak, the city council will close the public hearing and enter deliberations. Once the public hearing is closed, no further testimony will be received. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, this hearing is now open. Uh, city staff will now present its report. City manager Smith.
Yes, so the total supplemental budget that's before you tonight is six point seven million. Uh, a majority of that supplemental budget relates to a couple of projects that we didn't, we were not aware of as far as the timeline and when they would be happening, uh, when we adopted and proposed the original budget, um, last year. So I'm gonna go through, just highlight at a high level, the different funds that are affected, um, and what those are. Uh, if there's any questions, uh, I can, uh, work to address those at the end. So in, in the general fund, there, it's approximately a two hundred and four thousand dollar change to approximately ten million dollar budget. Those are for some additional part-time staff in both the court and finance area. It's reallocating, uh, some costs for the rec manager position in the Parks and Recreation Department, just uh, because a change in the way that that position's duties will be distributed, so different uh, parts of the general fund will be paying for that position. And then, um, there's some drug testing equipment that the police department will be purchasing. And revenue for all of this is, uh, either, uh, additional revenue that existing sources have, are coming in higher, or there are some grant funds related to that drug testing equipment. On the TRT fund, uh, it's an increase of about twenty-one thousand. And this is increasing the amount awarded in local TRT grants, um, just based on the large numbers of applications that came in, uh, and were requested. And our TRT collections cover this, uh, addi- there, the collections are coming in above budget, and so they cover this additional, uh, expense. The utility fund, it's about seven hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. Uh, we had some unplanned equipment replacement at the recycled water plant. And, uh, the additional revenue is coming in, um, based on the first sale of land in the South Hermiston Industrial Park that the utility fund invested in. And so that's the additional revenue that, uh, covers that, that cost at the region water plant, or at the recycled water plant. The reserve fund, which is a fund where we, uh, we, we put money there to save for projects and then to build those projects. That, this is the largest adjustment, about five point two million dollars. And this is, the major portion of that is to fund the aquifer storage and recharge project, um, that we are, uh, doing to, uh, it really is to help both our, uh, storage requirements in the city, but also for, uh, uh, enhancing our, our, um, sources of water and being able to pull water out of the, out of the aquifer, um, and, and to be able to use that, uh, in an ongoing basis in our system. And I can, we can talk more details if there's, uh, any questions about that. All of those projects, all of that, uh, funding, and also for a backup generator project in the regional water, uh, accounts, uh, are funded by grants or, uh, reimbursement from Amazon Web Services. Then the, in the regional water fund, there's some, uh, we, we allocate, uh, yeah, try to allocate our staff time. It's our, it's our regular water department staff that, that do the, the duties in the regional water system. And so we try to keep track of where they're working and, and allocate the costs that way. This is just a reallocation of some of those uh, overtime hours that, uh, that were originally allocated to the utility fund, but need, that should have been in the regional water fund. Then the enterprise zone fund, uh, has a, about a two hundred thousand dollar increase. And this just allocates some contingency to funds for, uh, the feasibility study we're doing on a potential, uh, indoor or health aquatics and wellness center. And then there's a, a increase of about five hundred thousand in the EOTech Fund for, um, there's a potential construction project that we will need some design funds for in this budget, and so, uh, these would be covered by, uh, outside reimbursements. Hopefully, we can talk a little bit more about that in the near future when we can announce the specifics of that project. But this will allow the design to start, uh, and then we can, uh, bring more details to the conversation. The IT fund has about sixty-two thousand dollar increase that's, um, uh, in the IT fund, instead of leasing, uh, a new vehicle, uh, we use some contingency, we, we would like to use some contingency to purchase a vehicle for the longer-term savings from an operational standpoint. And then we also receive some cybersecurity grants, and so those purchases were, would be made from the IT fund and the grant project, and the grant funds will cover those costs. That's a high-level summary. Be happy to answer any questions.
Councillor Meyer.
Um, the aquifer storage wasn't in the original budget because?
Because we didn't know when, that, we, we've been waiting on some permits. We didn't know when some of the design would be done. And so when we adopted the original budget, we just, we weren't sure if it was gonna happen this year at all. It might have been the next fiscal year. But it, that timeline moved up, and so we were able to do it this year, um, pending the approval of the supplemental budget.
And when would that start? Any projected?
Looking at awarding the contract in February, if, if everything moves forward. So for, and the big initial part of that is to drill a well.
Okay.
Councillor Brown?
I appreciate the staff report, especially kind of knowing what's being covered by what, so that, that, that gives a pretty good detail on, on what's going on here. I do have a question on the utility fund about the, uh, equipment replacement. Uh, I know we have a fund set aside specifically for high-ticket items like membranes that we've talked about in the past. I guess, what, what, is this something that's not, it's not a membrane, I'm assuming, so I guess?
Right, so this was, um, and, and the reason is that we just didn't have money allocated to spend for it. Not that we don't have any money to, to spend on it, but this was, I believe, the chlorine, uh, the chlorine building. Uh, there was some damage there, and we had to do some emergency repairs, and so this is to allocate for that.
Councillor Laitman?
Is this? Is that good? Okay.
I'm, um, looking at the budget changes, and it's right now, it says we have a budget amount of, um, over a hundred million dollars. And the increase here is asking for, uh, almost seven million dollars to go up to a hundred and sixteen million.
Correct.
So I'm just wondering, where's that other money coming from? Or do we already have it in our account, or is that money coming in and how, from where?
Right. Um, as I stated earlier, most of that, about five point three million of the six point seven is uh, reimbursements from Amazon Web Services, particularly for this, uh, aquifer storage and recharge project.
Okay.
Others, others are where revenues have come in higher, or, uh, we've gotten grant funds, or various smaller amounts for the rest.
So does that money go into our general fund, or it goes into other departments?
Well, uh, if you look through the, the details, each fund has, some of it will go into each of the funds that I mentioned.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
I did have a question. Um, you, I mean, when you were talking about the design part of the, the deal up at EOTech, you said hopefully we will be able to have money. Is that, hopefully, we will have the money to cover that, or?
Hopefully, we will be able to announce some things, and I, I can be a little less
Cryptic.
Cryptic. There you go.
Okay, I, 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 because I misunderstood, I didn't, I thought you were saying you were, hopefully, that, that we were gonna be getting grant funds to cover that.
No, this would be direct reimbursement from a
Okay.
Partner.
All right, that's what I, that was my question. Uh, is any other, any other council questions regarding the supplemental budget? Uh, councillor Kelso.
I'm curious as to where the, uh, IT security, the cybersecurity grant funds came from.
Um, it was from the, uh, emergency management, state emergency management.
Okay, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
All right, if there are no other questions, uh, public testimony. People wishing to speak are asked to state their names, mailing address, and limit testimony to five minutes. Are there any persons who wish to speak at this time? Seeing none. This hearing is now closed. Is there any further council discussion? Seeing none. This item will be presented again during resolution twenty-three fifty-four for final action. Speaking of which, resolution twenty-three fifty-four, a res- a resolution to adopt fiscal year twenty twenty-four through twenty twenty-five supplemental budget. City manager Smith.
Yeah, so this resolution would implement all that that I just talked about.
All right, so hit rewind if you're, have questions on that part of it. Uh, any, are there any council comments as regards to this resolution twenty-three twenty fifty-four? Seeing none. Are there any public comments? Also, none. Can I get a motion to adopt resolution, uh, twenty-three fifty-four and lay upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by councillor McCarthy, uh, seconded by councillor Barone to adopt resolution twenty-three fifty-four. Can I get a roll call?
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, uh, resolution twenty-three fifty-three. Uh, master fee schedule update to include water and sewer rates and various billing fees. City manager Smith.
Yeah, Mr. Morgan will handle this item.
Mr. Morgan.
Yes, so, uh, this evening, this resolution twenty-three fifty-three, uh, covers the overall master fee schedule update, uh, the largest change of which being the uh, water and sewer utility rates. Uh, additionally, some other smaller changes, uh, throughout, uh, includes some, uh, what we refer to as special water and sewer charges, and then also some changes to utility billing fees. On the water and sewer rate, uh, side of things, uh, city council back in two thousand and eighteen, uh, when it, uh, made wholesale, uh, restructuring of the water and sewer rates, uh, also adopted the policy of adjusting, uh, the water and sewer rates annually to keep up with inflation so that, uh, we could stabilize the rates, and, uh, the users would not see large fluctuations, uh, every few years, instead spreading that out over every year. Uh, there's a lot of different, uh, uh, inflation measures out there. The one that we use specifically and is, is kind of the industry standard in, uh, the public works realm is we use the engineering news records construction cost index, uh, which specifically looks just at those costs, uh, that are specific to the construction industry. Uh, in around, uh, the twenty twenty-two update, the city council at the time, uh, chose to make a slight, slight change to the policy of updating, uh, the rates every year with that, uh, CCI number, uh, specifically to try and smooth out, uh, that number a little bit more, uh, rather than experiencing a large one-time, uh, spike due to the inflation that was, uh, experienced in twenty twenty-one. Uh, so the proposal this evening, uh, using a three-year rolling average of the construction cost index is to adjust the water and sewer rates, uh, by three percent. Uh, so just looking back, uh, here, uh, just to kind of, uh, provide a little bit more detail on the, uh, engineering news records construction cost index. Uh, in twenty twenty-four, uh, it was excellent. We saw, uh, that inflation measure, uh, dip down below one percent. Uh, but if you go back, uh, over the past three years, uh, we're still, uh, playing a little bit of catch-up because that three-year average takes into account uh, the five point six percent from twenty twenty-two and the, uh, two point six percent from twenty twenty-three. So you can see, I also posted there on the right-hand side what that looks like when you do the, the three-year average component. So you can see why, uh, when we were doing this in January of twenty twenty-two, uh, the council was looking at otherwise, uh, swallowing a seven point four percent uh, increase that one year and instead opted to go with that three-year average. Uh, so that worked well for bringing the increase that year, uh, below what the inflation number was for that year, uh, knowing full well that once we rode down the back end of this inflationary curve, uh, we would be experiencing at least a year or two where, uh, the actual rate that we'd be recommending is slightly higher than what, uh, the inflation was for that year. So that's what we're experiencing this year, where we're recommending, uh, three percent, even though this past year alone, uh, was less than one percent. So uh, hopefully, next year, uh, it'll be lower than three percent. Uh, also important to keep in mind, um, because a lot of folks, they always want to know, okay, well, how does this impact me, you know, and, and that's a hard, uh, question to answer, uh, because it all depends on how much water, uh, you use and how much sewer you use, uh, in the wintertime. So, uh, we generally only really report out what the impact would be for the median residential customer. Uh, and so this is for combined both the water and sewer charges. Uh, also keeping in mind that people's water use, uh, ramps up significantly in the summertime because the, by far, the largest single use of water is for irrigating, uh, lawns. Uh, and so again, with a median number, uh, you would consider that half of the customers are, use more water than this. Half the customers use less than this, so in this case, the actual dollar impact, uh, for half the customers would be a little bit higher. Uh, for the half of the customers, it'd be a little bit lower than that. And then also recognizing that usage ramps up in the summertime. Uh, this is a smoothed, uh, twelve-month average over the course of an entire year. Uh, so that three percent, uh, increase for both water and sewer combined for the median residential customer works out to an increase of about three dollars and forty-four cents per month. Uh, also, would just like to, uh, remind the council, uh, that three dollar and forty-four cents per month smoothed average, uh, that is something that people can actually experience. If they come in and sign up for our equal pay option or our average pay option, uh, if you have, um, uh, an established history, uh, with us and, and paying your bills, uh, we will, uh, take your, uh, consumption and average over the course of twelve months, so you'll just pay a flat amount each month based on what your actual usage was over the past twelve months. So that's an option that we always encourage folks to, to take advantage of. So that was the, the main, uh, water and sewer rate changes. Also, I mentioned some changes to what we would consider to be special water and sewer, uh, charges. Uh, so included in the water and sewer section of the ma- rate master fee schedule, uh, there's also a rate for industrial users. Um, and we, that was a specially designed rate, uh, that is currently only utilized by one, uh, industrial user. That's Columbia Basin Biosciences, the CBD processing plant up on the hill. And so we developed that rate in around May of twenty twenty-one, uh, and that rate has not been adjusted since that time. So uh, this is just catching that rate up based on the E and R's construction cost index, uh, since it was established. So moving forward, that rate will also be adjusted, uh, at the same time as all the others are with the, the construction cost index. Also, there's some other small things that we charge for in the utility fund that aren't, you know, typical, uh, rates. Uh, so things like some of the smaller communities around us, uh, they don't have their own vector truck for cleaning out their sewer lines. Um, and we make that available to them. It is cheaper in the grand scheme of things for them to, to essentially rent ours, uh, a little bit every s- every, uh, year or so, rather than purchasing their own. Uh, so we do allow them to do that, but we set a, a price to try and recoup the cost of having that for us. Uh, so we're increasing that with inflation since twenty twenty. Uh, also, it's a sewer treatment plant. We accept, uh, discharge from septic, uh, hauling services as well as portable, uh, toilet disposal services. Uh, so adjusting that rate with inflation, and then also adjusting the meter deposit, uh, with construction contractors come, uh, and they, uh, check out a meter from us to, um, provide them with construction water. So we're adjusting that, uh, meter deposit as well since, uh, inflation, uh, from twenty twenty. Uh, the final, uh, kind of section is making some changes to utility billing fees. Uh, and so, uh, the charge for disconnecting or reconnecting, uh, utility service has long been, uh, standing at twenty dollars, uh, to do that service. Um, going back at least since twenty twenty. I'm not sure when it was, uh, last adjusted. So, uh, recommending adjusting that to seventy-five dollars. Uh, also, uh, we do experience some customers, uh, when they've been shut off, um, and their meters locked, uh, they're, they, some customers do go out and tamper with that and end up damaging the meter. So uh, if there is meter tampering, uh, it happens so often that we have a rate for it. So, uh, adjusting that rate from twenty-five dollars So, uh, adjusting that rate from twenty-five dollars to a hundred dollars, uh, and then also actually taking, uh, we have a service where if somebody would like, uh, somebody from the water department to go out and check their meter to ensure that it's reading accurately. Uh, we used to charge fifteen dollars for that service, um, because it does, you know, divert staff time from what they're typically doing. Uh, we're actually recommending, uh, just to take that down to zero. Uh, we feel like that's a level of service that we could just absorb, uh, inside of our regular operations. So just in terms of fiscal impact of each one of these changes, uh, the three percent adjustment to the water and sewer rates, uh, will be a change, an increase in revenue of approximately three hundred thousand dollars per year. Uh, the change on the industrial user rate will, uh, increase revenues approximately five thousand dollars a year. Uh, the changes on the special fees and the billing fees, um, are relatively de minimis, uh, in the grand scheme of the utility fund, uh, but they will be changes to the individual users. So with that, stand for any questions?
I don't speak Latin. What's de minimis?
Uh, de minimis means that it's, uh, too small to really report.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, uh, council comments?
I just have a question. With the meter, if someone, uh, that tampers with it and it costs more than a hundred dollars, will they be charged that extra to pay for it to be repaired?
Uh, yeah, uh, currently what we do is if, um, if we have to go out and we actually replace the meter or the endpoints or the angle stop or any of that, that's passed along to the person who's damaged that meter and or equipment.
Okay, thank you. Additionally, I'm sure that there's probably can be the possibility of criminal charges in regards to theft of services as well, right? Okay.
Yes, when it's appropriate.
Uh, you know, also in regards to that seventy-five, um, that one, that's, that's something that, given certain circumstances, that's something that can be waived under, uh, circumstances that, to be determined.
Sorry, couldn't push my button there. But yes, yeah, we are, we always work, strive to work with the customer if there's special circumstances, as, as you stated.
All right, thank you. Councillor Brown?
I got a couple of questions, so, uh, if, if anybody else on the council wants, then I can just ask one at a time. But, um, if we can go back on the slides just to the questions, or at least, uh, there is three, I think it might be one more back. I just had a question over, over these ones, actually. Uh, councillor Lynton already kind of asked one, um, but it was more on the, I guess, for me, the, the, the meter inspection. I guess, we, I know we have eye on water. Uh, how is that different, I guess, because that reads the meter, I, how is that different? Or I guess, is there any, sometimes it's different from eye on water and then what's actually going on the meter, I'm assuming?
Yes, that's typically if the customer doesn't believe that the meter's reading accurately. So that's what they want us to come out and check.
Have you had cases like that where there is a discrepancy between the app and then what's actually going on?
Almost never.
Okay. Thank you, um, if I may, um, just personally for me, the disconnect, uh, reconnect fee, that, I feel like that's something that maybe low-income, uh, families might be struggling with. And so I, as a, like, just on face value, I, I'm not really in favor, but I, I do have a question. Uh, of those people that are, I guess, um, homes, families that get disconnected and reconnected, I guess, how much are, for lack of a better word, like frequent flyers or people that, that this happens often to?
Yeah, currently, most of these, uh, we do have the frequent flyers, to, to use your, your terminology.
Okay.
So most of these are affected by that and because the fees are low enough that, that, um, there's not much of a deterrent to stop them from not abusing that, so. But like, as I stated before, if a customer is experiencing, you know, financial difficulties, they contact us before that occurs, we're more than happy to work with them. We will do our best to work with that, that individual.
Well, thank you, Mr. Palacios, for giving me that information because I, I feel like this would affect, like, if, if you're struggling to pay, like, a water bill and then it gets shut off, I feel like a, a fee that's increased is just going to be more of a, a barrier or burden for someone to reconnect the water. But if it's like, like you're telling me that, you know, and it makes sense, you know, if, you know, things are financially not, not going well, then, you know, having communication with the city, uh, would be great. And so that makes me feel a little bit better about the, the disconnect reconnect fee because I feel like that would be difficult for some families. Um, and so, uh, other than that, I, the only, I guess, other comment I would have would be kind of in line with, uh, councillor Lynton, which is the tampering. I feel like that, like, if you're tampering, you're, you're doing quite a bit to, like, uh, the infrastructure that we have here in the city. And so, uh, I, I would be a little bit more in favor with that as well. Um, so those were the only questions I had, so thank you very much.
Councillor Roberts?
I'm curious, uh, how many notices that somebody gets before they actually get shut off? How many, how many times is the city reaching out to them?
The way the current policy is, is that you get, you get your initial billing and then we give you one more month after that and you get a second billing. And then after that, you get another, I think it's ten days, ten to twenty days before we physically go on and turn you off. So you, there's a bit of leeway there.
So they've, they've had plenty of chance by the time they, they actually get disconnected and, and incur this fee, the city's been in touch with them a number of times.
That is correct.
Okay. If I may.
One more.
Um, I want to go back to the, uh, three dollars and forty-four cents of, a year. Um, they said that that was, let me get up here on the page. Um, based on the median residential customer, how, how is that, how is the median residential customer value calculated?
Yeah, so in your packet, there's, um, an attachment labeled utility rate example sheets. And so, uh, I publish that every year when we do this. And so when you look along, if you're able to pull it up, along the top there, um, we show what the, uh, usage is each month. And so, uh, what we were able to do, um, we haven't updated it for maybe two or three years, but, because it's quite the extensive process, was to go through all roughly forty-five hundred of our residential accounts and actually find the median, uh, customer in each month. Um, and so those gallon figures are actually specifically calculated for how much water that median residential customer used in each one of those months. And so then we use that to calculate what their bill would be each month and then we add that up over twelve months and divide it by twelve.
Because my, my thought on this is, uh, you know, we, we've got a lot of new construction coming in, uh, homes sit vacant for a while, even though they're on those, the city system. I'm, I'm concerned that, uh, where we have s- a lot of residences that maybe have low usage, is that, are, are we, are we taking out the outliers? Are we factoring that in? Because I'd be afraid of having a higher number for most median users if, if we're not taking things like that into account.
Yeah, so, uh, the short answer is yes, we did. So of those about forty-five hundred accounts, uh, we took out the low outliers. We didn't take out, you know, uh, uh, some of the high outliers used to sit on the city council, actually. Uh, we, and we left them in there. Uh, but, uh, so of those forty-five hundred, about eight hundred returned usage of zero. And so we just took out all the ones that were zero for those months. So that's median of customers that actually had a reading for that month.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
Councillor Hayward?
Um, coming back to the tampering, how often do we see that?
Um, unfortunately, I, I have those numbers. We average four hundreds, uh, we average fifty a month.
Fifty a month?
Yeah.
Is any of those repeat?
Yes.
Okay.
Most of those are repeats.
Okay. Then, on the water, in the summer, do we offer anything for people that have pools that fill pools up? Because I know a lot of people in town have pool, personal pools that try to fill those up. Do we off- offer a incentive saying, hey, if you're filling a pool, let us know, maybe offer them a rate or something different? Because they are filling a pool up.
Not currently.
That's all I got. Yeah.
I'd just like to thank the, uh, members who were on the city council in two thousand and eighteen, uh, for their foresight in, in, uh, locking these rate increases to, um, inflationary indicators. Because it's made our job a lot easier tonight than it might otherwise would have been. So thank you.
Couple of, have they had a chance to ask any questions? Fire?
I will respond to the, yes, my, my water bill was a lot of money, because, because my backyard is enormous and it's all dirty.
You were feeling guilty?
Well, yeah.
All right, uh, so, uh, any public comment regarding, uh, resolution twenty-three fifty-three? Seeing none, can I get a motion to adopt resolution twenty-three fifty-three and lay upon the record?
So moved.
Second.
Been moved by councillor Roberts, seconded by councillor McCarthy. And, okay, roll call.
Yes, yes.
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 Yes, and that motion carries unanimously. Um, you know, it's always difficult in this, in this arena to raise the cost, you know, raise what we charge. And then, you know, we don't do this willy-nilly, so to speak. You know, we, it's, takes some careful consideration and I know, I appreciate everybody asking questions and getting the, getting the answers that, you know, even the public may, you know, may not feel like coming down here and asking. But getting those, those questions answered so that we, you know, have our say, we have our, you know, our part. So thank you, councillors, for asking those questions and, and getting the answers that, that I'm sure the public wants to know. All right, next up, uh, other, we have the Water Sewer Street Five-Year Capital Improvement Plan Update. City Manager Smith?
Mr. Morgan.
I would imagine, Mr. Morgan.
Yes, uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, uh, this is, uh, an action to adopt, uh, our next two-year update to our five-year capital improvement plan. And so we'll roll right into it. Uh, first off, I wanted to provide a little bit of background for some of the councillors who, uh, may not have been, uh, involved, uh, back at the time on how we got to this point, uh, with having our capital improvement plan. So prior to around two thousand and seventeen, two thousand and eighteen timeframe, uh, we did not have a capital improvement plan. Uh, and that was made, uh, in extremely obvious when in two thousand and seventeen, uh, the utility fund actually had to borrow about one-point-one million dollars, uh, just to dredge the sewer lagoon. Uh, so solids are constantly being sent to the, the sewer lagoon, uh, something that really we should have, uh, been planning for and, and really more operational type of an expense. Uh, but we ended up having to borrow for that. Uh, so pre-two thousand and nineteen, you could describe our strategy as more reactive, uh, rather than proactive. Uh, and it was definitely a, a fix things as they break, uh, which can be a strategy, um, that can work, uh, for a time, but eventually it, it ends up coming back and catching up to you. So, uh, because inevitably, you know, if, if the strategy is to just fix things as they break, you might be able to get a couple more years out of, uh, a certain piece of equipment. But inevitably, that piece of equipment's going to be attached to something else that's really expensive. And if you don't have the resources or didn't plan for replacing it at the time, uh, you'll not replace that. That will just break a couple of years later and it ends up just being much more inefficient and end up costing, uh, the users and the ratepayers. So, uh, at that time, in around two thousand and nineteen, is when we adopted our first, uh, wholesale capital improvement plan. Uh, that was adopted in conjunction with the full-scale restructuring of our water and sewer, uh, rates, uh, as well as adopting a policy of annually adjusting them to keep up with inflation, which is what you just, uh, did this evening. So in, uh, two thousand and nineteen, that's when we, uh, established our first rolling five-year capital improvement plan. Also wanted to point out, uh, to folks, you know, why we refer to it as a rolling capital improvement plan, uh, because I think there's some confusion among some folks that, you know, it's a five-year plan. Okay, once it's done after five years, great, we're done, now you can lower my water and sewer bill. You know, that's really not how this works and you'll see later on, you know, why, why I say that. Um, really, this plan, it's a rolling plan in the sense that we're just looking at a five-year window. It's not efficient really for us to be trying to plan, uh, specific projects nine, ten, twelve years down the road. We have master plans that take those things into account and we know of them and keep them in mind, uh, but we're not actually planning to implement any of those within the next five years. So, uh, this is a plan to look at what can we feasibly actually accomplish with the resources we have available within the next five years. And so then, as we move forward and start to accomplish those projects, uh, we bring this plan back to the council and the public infrastructure committee, uh, every two years, uh, to look at the projects, see how we've been doing. And then add two more years onto the back end as we roll the pro- the, the plan forward. So this is our fourth update, uh, to the capital improvement plan. And so, uh, now that we're, you know, we've more or less operationalized this process now and, uh, uh, started to, to get some good projects underneath our belt, it's worth looking back and seeing where we've been. So since two thousand and eighteen, we've now replaced about two and a half miles of water main, uh, on, in the water system. We've expanded the community's drinking water supply by about twelve hundred gallons per minute and we've updated our water system master plan. Uh, for those who are not, uh, local government geeks, um, that may not sound exciting, but it, the, the master plan is a big deal, uh, because prior to getting that updated, uh, our last water system master plan was dated nineteen ninety-six. Uh, and so for a community that's growing, that's a real challenge because, uh, really all of the plan was completely outdated and didn't pertain to anything anymore. So, uh, we were kind of flying without a, without a map. And so, uh, getting that updated was huge for being able to then inform a lot of these projects that now make their way into the capital improvement plan to make sure that we're focusing on the, the most important things first. So since two thousand and eighteen, our total spend, uh, on just the water system has been about four and a half million dollars. And, uh, source for those revenues is all from user rates and to a lesser extent, system development charges, which are charged to development as they use capacity within the system. Just a couple of examples, uh, since two thousand and eighteen, uh, this is an image at the intersection of Third and Gladys, looking off to the east. So that's just from this past summer, uh, we replaced about a mile of water main in Gladys as well as, uh, Main Street. So impacted a lot of folks downtown with that project, but, uh, also replaced a lot of pipe that we estimate was somewhere in the range of seventy to eighty years old along that route. This is a, uh, pump from our well number five that's located over in Theater Sports Park. Uh, that's our workhorse well that provides, uh, the vast majority of our drinking water throughout the community. Uh, so that needed some upgrades and rehabilitation, but also we upgraded, uh, the capacity and that's where those additional twelve hundred gallons per minute of water for the community, uh, are now available through. Looking at the water side of things, uh, since two thousand and eighteen, we've replaced about three-quarters of a mile of sewer main, uh, less than the water side of things. But that's mainly because you can see we've really been focusing on our sewer lift stations. We have thirteen sewer lift stations throughout the community and those being mechanical systems, uh, when those fail, uh, things stop flowing in the right directions and you get some catastrophic problems pretty quickly, uh, that we really try to avoid as much as we can. So a lot of our lift stations in the community, uh, were over forty years old, uh, that means all of the, uh, mechanical equipment, electrical equipment, those types of things, uh, were starting to fail or coming up on the potential for catastrophic failure. Uh, so we've really been focusing a lot on the lift stations over the, the sewer main and that's why the, the sewer main's not replaced quite as much as on the water side of things. So total spend on the sewer side of things, about three-point-eight million dollars. Again, the revenue for that comes entirely from user rates and system development charges from new construction. Uh, this is just an image at the intersection of Newport and Seventh, looking off to the south. Uh, we replaced, uh, some sewer because we had, uh, limited capacity, uh, for accommodating continued growth on the south end of the city. This next one, uh, this is actually our sewer lift station number six. It doesn't look like much, but it cost about six hundred thousand dollars to replace that. So, uh, most of that system is underground, really you're just looking at the control panel that's above ground. Uh, that's at the intersection of First and Ridgeway, uh, so we just recently replaced that, uh, because again, that had been put in in nineteen eighty-one and was starting to experience some mechanical failures. On the street side of things, that's the one that people can really recognize more. Uh, and so when we talk about all the different types of significant treatments that we do to maintaining the streets, uh, we've, uh, either, uh, rebuilt, repaired, or infilled roughly three miles of streets since two thousand and eighteen. Uh, we've installed, uh, nearly a mile of brand-new sidewalk infill projects. Uh, we've replaced one culvert on South First Place. Uh, total project spend, we've spent a little over five million dollars over that time. Uh, actually, a majority of those dollars is actually from a state earmark that we received, uh, mainly tied to the North First Place project. But about two million dollars of that comes from, uh, local resources. Uh, just a couple of examples, this is one that not as many folks may have noticed, but, uh, this is actually Northwest Third Street, uh, one of the few remaining gravel, uh, streets in town. Uh, if former councillor Harden was still here, he'd probably be applauding, you know, he's big on, uh, the gravel streets that we still had, uh, getting them paved in, in the community. So, uh, that was actually, we were able to do that project because we used that as a detour when we rebuilt, uh, North First Place. And so we were able to use our state funding to get that, uh, paved in order to accommodate that as a detour. So that was a good project to get completed. Uh, also, this is Hermiston Avenue, uh, in the downtown core area, looking off to the east. As part of that project here a few years ago, we did a full-depth rebuild of the first few blocks there. Also rebuilt all of the sidewalks in there, HES added some decorative lighting. But also, we did a grind and inlay on the rest of Hermiston Avenue, all the way out to 11th Street as part of that project. Finally, on the street side of things, this is North First Place, looking roughly to the south. Look, you can see Hermiston Avenue in that vicinity. You can see this is one, starting to do paving. Also, I'll see if the, the green light, oh, well, it's not, not important. But in that image, you can actually see, if you knew where Ridgeway and First is, that's actually where lift station number six is located. So we do try to, try to combine these projects together as best we can to be as efficient as we possibly can. So when we're in a neighborhood and we're ripping things to pieces, we just try to rip it all to pieces at once so that we don't have to come back anytime soon and disrupt the, the neighborhood, because we certainly get complaints. We try to be as accommodating as possible, but we try to combine all these together for efficiency and just to, to be good neighbors. Also, some of the equipment, we also throw into our capital improvement plan because it's such large dollar-figure equipment. About a half million dollars we spent on a backup power generator at our well number six recently. And then also, that's an image of a Vector truck, similar to what we have in the sewer department for cleaning out our sewer lines. We spent about $490,000 on a new Vector truck here about four years ago, and we replace those about every 10 years. So that's definitely something that we try to plan for in the capital improvement plan. So from a transparency and really accountability standpoint, you can see we've spent across all three departments a little over $15 million since 2018. And about four years ago, we stood up a new webpage called HermistonProjects.com. And so we take the entire capital improvement plan, post that onto the website, and we also take each individual project and create an individual project page for each one of these projects. So whether they're still in the planning stages, whether they're in the operational stage or whether they've been completed, you'll be able to go there and review those and see what we may have planned in your neighborhood. Also, I would point out that we report out the results, you know, regardless of what they look like. So we report out down to the penny how much we actually spent on any one of those projects. And so when you go back and you look at the completed projects, you'll be able to see how much we actually spent, as well as what we originally expected the project to, to cost. You'll see that some of the projects come in higher than we originally expected. And I would say almost every single time that the project comes in higher than it was originally expected, that's because the scope was expanded. So oftentimes, when we get into these projects and we're doing, doing a project, you know, we'll see things like, well, there's some, you know, valves that are just right next to this project, and they're really old and they need to be replaced, you know, let's grab those, or, you know. So there's different kind of scope additions that end up inevitably getting added onto these projects. And so we don't go back and, you know, change the original cost estimate. We just show, you know, here's how much we originally thought it was going to cost, and after we added these additional things on, here's the total cost. So I encourage everybody to go check out HermistonProjects.com so you can see those, see those projects. Also, you know, we've done a lot, that, that is a lot, but what do we have left to do? We still have a lot still to come. So just looking on the water side of things, we have 83 miles of water main in the city. Since 2018, we've replaced two and a half miles, or about 3% of the system. That means that on average, we've been replacing about a half of 1% of the system per year in terms of the pipe. And so that really puts us on a 200-year replacement cycle. So that means that if we continue on at this pace of reinvesting back in the system, we just put a brand-new pipe in Gladys Avenue, we won't touch that pipe again for 200 years. So that's kind of the, the schedule that we're on right now. On the sewer side of things, it looks worse. I mentioned we had been focusing a lot more on those lift stations that have a much shorter lifespan, but so replacing three-quarters of a mile of pipe puts us on about a 600-year replacement cycle. So I anticipate that replacement cycle to shrink significantly over the coming years, add more piping projects as we've worked on a lot of the lift stations. On the street side of things, it actually, I was surprised it came out looking the best. So 77 miles of center line within the city, we've replaced three miles. So that puts us on about 150-year replacement cycle for streets. So how do we get to developing the capital improvement projects and capital improvement plan? So it's a target-rich environment. Each department has lots of needs, and the needs always outweigh the resources that we have available. So each of the, the individual departments, they identify what their needs are, and then they get with our engineers, Anderson Perry, and they, you know, refine any one of those projects down into a single page. So this is just a screenshot from our, our plan of our View Drive Booster Pump Station project. So the water department would say, you know, we have, we really need to be doing something with the View Drive Booster Pump Station. They go in, really refine the scope, narrow that down a very specific project description, and Anderson Perry develops a rough cost estimate for that. And then that's what we develop all of the project list for in the CIP. Then, at the same time, we have to identify, you know, what resources do we even have available to, to pay for these things? And so meanwhile, we go through a pretty intensive pro forma. We look at our existing operations and then try to project forward over the next five years what our operational expenses are going to be, what our revenues are going to be, what our debt obligations are. And then after all of those are satisfied each year, how much do we think we would have available then to actually transfer to do capital projects? So that is what then gets spit out into a table like this, so we know how much we have available in our capital projects fund. We keep all of the capital improvement projects in their own reserve accounts so that we're not tempted to rob from those accounts just for operational type things. So we, we really try to make sure that we're just spending those on these capital replacement dollars. So once we have an idea of the available resources that we'll have in the coming years, then we start taking those pages of individual projects and just start slotting in the highest priority ones over the course of the next five years. So this process, we just had the Public Infrastructure Committee meet right before the council meeting this evening, went into more detail on every single one of the projects that are in the five-year plan with the, the Public Infrastructure Committee. So then the council approves the capital improvement plan. But probably important for folks to keep in mind, you know, this is more like a, a map and a compass-type document than a turn-by-turn, you know, GPS instructions. So, you know, that would be more like the annual budget. So we are using this capital improvement plan, you know, where we have all of these. Don't expect at the end of five years for us to go back and say, yeah, we did each one of these projects in exactly this fiscal year. We're really just kind of using this to orient ourselves when we're developing the annual budget each year. So then we bring those budget requests to the city council, and then each year, the city council actually approves the spending plan for that year. So approving the capital improvement plan does not actually authorize expenditure of any of those dollars. Those come with the actual annual budget. So with that, I'd stand for any questions.
Council questions?
I know there'll be an opportunity for committee reports later, but as he said earlier, we did already have this committee report prior to this meeting. So my comment on that is what Mark said.
Counselor Roberts?
I also attended that prior meeting, so this is my second time seeing this. So if I looked distracted, it was because I was checking out HermistonProjects.com. And I gotta say, that's an impressive website. So I, I also want to put my plug out there. If anybody ever wants to know what the city's doing, I, I'm impressed with that website, so.
Any others, any other council comments? I agree. Any public comment on Water Sewer Capital Improvement Plan? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve the capital improvement plan as presented? And motion moved by Counselor Linton, seconded by Counselor Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. So yeah, that's great, you know, it's a, your roadmap is, has been committed. Get your map and compass out. Maybe a little GPS will help. I, I, I agree with, with Counselor Roberts, the HermistonProjects.com. Please, if you have any questions in regards to where your money's going in regards to the, to the projects that the city has going on, it's a great, great opportunity to take a look at what's going on and where your money's going, so. Outstanding work, sirs. Okay, Yumantilla County Special Library District Contract Renewal. City Manager Smith?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, so we're going to shift gears from talking about pipes and roads to another service that the, the city offers. So since 1986, there's been a Yumantilla County Special Library District approved by the residents of the county, minus the city of Hermiston. I don't know all the history on that, maybe someone can inform me sometime more of the history. Okay, I don't want to know. But, but starting in 1988, the city entered into an agreement with the district to provide library services to the residents of the 97838 zip code that don't live in the city limits. And so we've been in partnership with them for a long time, and I think it's been a great partnership for our larger, broader community in the provision of library services. When Mark Rose came here about, is it eight years? Yeah, so about eight years ago, there was a lot of discussion going on related to the formula of how those funds were distributed. The district director at that time had a hard time explaining it. Some of the city, other cities on this side of the county were concerned. And so they went through a process of, of putting together a new formula that would, that, that, you know, I think we would agree makes a lot of sense and, and, and is a lot easier to understand why and what, what they're doing. The, three years ago was when that new formula was implemented. And at that time, I had the same concerns that I have sitting before you tonight about the formula. But because of the timing of that and other challenges or issues that we were working on, I did not really push super hard with the council to, to go into detail about my concerns and was hoping over the next three years, we would be able to have some more discussion with the district and maybe resolve some of our concerns. During that time, a new director was hired, and I think that change really has improved communication as I talk with the leaders of other cities on the west side of the county. They feel more comfortable and are, feel like they can address their concerns. But under that, guys, we still have not been able to get any or get any change in that formula to address the concerns that we expressed. So I'm going to walk through kind of my concerns and the impact that, that, that formula has on, on the city of Hermiston, and, and more particularly, not really the city of Hermiston, but the residents of the zip code that, that, that receive services under the contract that we are, we're doing. So could you pull that? So this is a, a page in your, in your packet that lays out, these are all the different libraries that the district distributes funding to and their populations. And if you take a look, this half of the page that you're looking at now shows that the populations would make the, what we'll call Hermiston Rural, the third-largest library in, in the district. And so under, and then if you go down to the bottom, kind of split the formula into two, two halves. The first half is, kind of, they're calling it base threshold, trying to, trying to make sure that every library has the basics. And if you look at our line, we're kind of in the middle of that, it's a little hard to see, but there's zeros for us throughout that first half of the formula. So then, when it comes to the back half, which is based on, on the population of the, of the different library service areas, then we're included in the formula and based on, on the current populations and that formula, we, we would be slotted to receive about $130,000 in the 25, 26 budget. But leaving the 8,700 people that live in the 97838 outside of the city, if we were to include that in the first half of the formula, it would make our, our portion of that about $250,000. So it's a meaningful difference. But as you can see, I, despite my concerns over this, based on my conversations and based on trying to keep a good working relationship and good library services, I'm recommending we approve this. I'd really like to continue to try to discuss different ways that this could be addressed. Tonight, Heather Estrada is here with the library district, so I'm sure she would be interested in, in explaining some of the, the reasoning, the thinking behind what they've done. And, but I just, with that, I'd, I'd be happy to answer any questions about what I presented, and then I think open that.
Counselor Meyer?
Okay, if, if we go ahead and approve this tonight, when would be our next opportunity to go over it again?
So this is a three-year agreement. I mean, there are indications that they really don't want to renegotiate, they don't want to re-figure out this formula. It was, it was a difficult process to get there, and I know they worked really hard. Happened to happen in the middle of COVID, so they did a lot of it virtually. It was not an easy process, but not, you know, things that, that are good sometimes take, take a lot of effort, so. But that would be, that would be the, the next opportunity.
Counselor Brown?
I guess my comments are, this is, this is a little disappointing, especially knowing that we could have at least had a conversation back in '22, to know a little bit more about this. At the end of the day, we're a regional hub. I, I mean, we're, we are the 97838. We do have rural, but we also have a lot of other cities that enjoy the services that Hermiston has to offer. I get, I have a que, I have like two questions, really, it's, it's the why. I know you, as a city manager, probably know a little bit about that, but I would like to know more of the why. And, and honestly, even just these populations, I, I, I want to know exactly where the population numbers are coming from. I, I hear it's from PSU, but I don't know if some of these populations might be inflated for, and correct me if I'm wrong on this, but I, I, I've known that some of the cities have included like prison populations to inflate their population in general. So I, I guess I'm curious about the population numbers, and I'm also just curious about hearing the why.
Well, I'm going to leave the district to, to explain the why because I, I don't think I can articulate it very well. And, but I, I'm not questioning the populate, population numbers are super hard to come by. And as far as the prison populations, that's a legitimate, that's a legitimate item to count in a population. That's what the census says. You know, it, I mean, it definitely impacts, you know, who really receives services, but it's, it's a standard, and I, I don't think we want to, we're gonna, I'm not going to quibble with, with that portion of it.
No, and I understand your point, and I, I definitely, I get that. I guess for me, and I guess really it would be like if, if they're actually being served, like you're saying. So I mean, the population to me is valid if those members are also getting served, and if that's the case, I have nothing to argue against. But if there's, if those are numbers there and there is no service to those places, then I, I think it's just inflationary.
Right, it's, but it's, but then it gets very difficult to say, well, now I'm going to back out, you know, this number, if I go back to the census, you can see who the group quarters counts are. I mean, it just, it just makes it a lot more difficult to, and so my perspective, we just leave him, leave it in, it's, it is what it is, and we, we just live with it. But I understand your concern.
Thank you, and I just wanted to really just explain, this, it's displeasure. I mean, this isn't really great news to hear, I understand about working relating, relationships, but I, I, that's why I'm wanting to hear the why. And so I'll, I'll let the, the rest of the council ask the questions, but I would be curious to hear the, the why from the, from the district itself.
Counselor Kelso?
Yeah, thank you. It's odd to me that we're subsidizing the, the rest of the county, our city is, to the tune of about $120,000. And I'm interested to hear the, the district, the library district's perspective, but it would be... the library district's perspective, but it would be a lot more um agreeable to this if I felt like you had the sense that there was a chance that there was a that we might renegotiate this uh to be somewhat more in our favor. From your comments thus far, I don't get that sense. Would you say that's a fair characterization?
And that's, after my last meetings with them, I I didn't get a lot of sense that they are interested in making any changes to the formula and how it's applied.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Hayward?
At some point, I would like to hear your concerns on this. I know it's probably not a good time because it'll probably be lengthy, but I would like to hear that from you at some point to kinda understand this a little bit more, your concerns.
Okay. Counselor McCarthy?
So I know that we have um a number of actions rec- uh potentially recommended here in the staff report. What are the consequences of just, just so everybody understands, of just, we're not gonna agree to this kind of situation?
I don't wanna lose a hundred and thirty thousand dollars to the general fund. That's, I mean, that's the bottom line, why I've recommended what I have. But that's, that's my, for now, yes.
Any other counsel comments? Counsel Roberts?
I'm probably pretty naive on on these things. As I told Mr. Rose, I wish I could say I'm an avid reader, but I'm 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 not the library's most uh prolific customer. That's that's hopefully gonna change, but uh what I guess I wanna know is um what do we get out of this agreement? Because, you know, we're talking about that that we're we're funding this and we get funding and whatnot. So if we're gonna have this hundred-and-twenty-thousand, hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar deficit, what what are we getting out of this for 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 that agreement to be in place?
Well, I mean, I mean, we're getting the the contribution that that we get. We're also getting, you know, collaboration and working with the districts, the or the other libraries in the district. You know, the 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 district has done a great job of making sure everybody, you know, if you have a library card here, you can go to any of the library card, libraries in the district and and utilize their services. The district also kind of outside of this formula uh helps share in the cost of some of the electronic resources that go uh that we participate in. We we also pay our share of that, but they they pay a portion. And then um uh there there are a number of others. They do, they do some uh early childhood reading where they come uh into Head Start and other uh programs here and do do reading, trying to encourage families to to do that. And so there, I mean, I'm really, I really struggle because the money thing really, really kinda gets to me, but at the same time, I think it's a good partnership. I don't, I don't wanna throw that all away, but it, so there are a lot of things that I think are valuable in the partnership.
And so to clarify my question, you you answered it, by the way. I I should have said more. What what is the district providing us that that we gain a benefit for this partnership? And and it does sound like, other than the money thing, um it, that they are providing, you know, benefits to the city of Hermiston as well. Is that correct?
Yes, yeah, I mean, and then they do, you know, they do, they organize training that some of our staff will attend, different things like that, so. Yeah, I mean, it it's not a, I I'm not saying it's a one-sided thing. I'm not, I'm not doing that. But the the money thing is a big concern, and I, so that's why I'm bringing it to you in this forum to have this discussion.
And and I I mirror the the disappointment uh in on the money thing, and and were it not for that, I'd think we'd be um not really having much of a discussion, so, thank you.
Anybody else before we get to your your second time?
Yeah.
Okay, Counsel Brown?
I just wanted to know a little bit more about how the way we receive funds. I I know that you said earlier that the special district includes everybody except for the city of Hermiston, so I'm assuming that there are other streams of revenue that we have that maybe they don't, or I guess is, I guess are we getting money from something else that they are also getting money for, but we're just not a part of that pot?
Not quite sure. I mean, so they have a tax rate that applies to everywhere in the county except the city of Hermiston. And so that's where their funding comes from. And the, a majority, I'm sure they have some other sources. I haven't looked at their budget very close, their total budget. We receive our property tax, and so, you know, one thing that they bring forward every time we annex, it takes people out. It takes land, not, usually not very many people, land out of their district and and brings it into the city. But um I I don't think there's anything else that I'm, at least that I'm aware of.
Thank you.
Okay, um, any other questions that I had were pretty well answered as well. My my only would have been, you know, what is the, you know, the the bottom line is, is if if the council votes to approve this contract, we, it it's gonna cost us more?
No, this is what we've been operating under the last three years, so it's not gonna change.
Stay the same.
It's gonna stay the same.
And if if we vote, if if they were to vote against this?
Then we would be potentially finding a hundred and thirty thousand plus dollars to fill the budget.
Uh, okay.
Okay, alright. I think uh for me, it's, like, we kinda started with this whole topic about, you know, there's this library district. We weren't really a part of it. There was some some funky things even back in nineteen eighty-eight, and so I guess for me, I you know, life's built on relationships, right? And so I'd I'd like to see uh maybe the city or reengage in a conversation about that, um unless the city fully knows what's what's happened in the past and and there's reasons why we're not joining together, but, I mean, this sounds like it'd be something that'd benefit everybody in in our county, in our region, and so.
Are you, are you saying to to join the district?
Yes, I guess I'm wanting to know.
That would take a, that would take an election process.
Gotcha.
And so, and then there would be an impact on our um compression, tax compression.
Okay.
I don't know the impact of that. I'm not saying it's positive or negative, but that would be the considerations that would need to be.
Well, well, thank you for explaining the process, cuz I didn't know that's, those are the type of things that it would entail. So I guess the only thing left for me is I would just like to hear from the library district itself, if the council's also willing to listen.
Well, we have, do have public comment coming up, so they will have that opportunity. So any other?
Um, one other thing. Where do we get the funding since we're gonna be taking a loss on this?
Well, so we're we're not taking a loss in that it's not money we've had and then are losing. It's just, this is, I mean, the best term I can think of would be forgone revenues, so we we, it's what would, if the formula went and applied to all residents of the district, that's what we would get. But they've applied it differently, so we have been getting it based on the current, the the formula I explained, and it, and and the hundred and thirty thousand is the approximate. I think we've been coming in over that, over budget on that um every year, but that's what we've been budgeting is a range.
Okay, thank you for explaining that.
Just to make sure I understand, so the uh regardless of whatever amount the city ends up getting, whether there's negotiation or not, this affects the fiscal year budget that we are about to plan?
Alright, everybody's had at least one chance to talk, so we've, some of you have two, and technically, per our new rules, you're only supposed to have two, so um. That's why I hesitated on you. So uh at this time, are there public comments? Please step forward, state your name, address?
Hi, so I'm Heather Estrada, and I am the district director of the Yumitila County Special Library District.
Welcome.
Uh, my address is in Pendleton, so I don't live in Hermiston. Um, three-twenty Northeast First. Thank you for listening to me, and I can answer many of those questions that you were asking. But Mr. Smith already did a great job of kind of telling you when the district started and all of that. And I I might go over a little bit just to, cuz some of you have asked some of those questions. So um the way it works is we have a permanent tax rate, and every person in the county except for if you live in Incorporated Hermiston, since we get that tax money, okay? And so then what we do with that tax money is we keep twenty percent for the district office. And what we do with that twenty percent is we have three staff members, which is the majority, of course, of any uh operation, and those three staff members are me, the district director. And Mr. Smith mentioned some of those things, but um some of what I do is we do do two in-services a year where, cuz from the beginning, some of the libraries have, you know, like you do. Mark is a, has a master's degree in library science, but many of the small cities do not have that. And so from the beginning, the idea has been to help, um, you know, train them, teach them, keep everybody up to date in library services, and so um the district funds and puts those together twice a year, as well as other trainings for the directors more often than that and stuff like that. Um, and then the other thing that I do is I just, I come to city councils and I tell you how we work together, and I come alongside library directors and different things that they are dealing with in the twelve different cities. Everybody's in a different place, and so um things like that. The second person is our cataloger, and she's the cataloging authority for the district, and she does a lot of cataloging, and she also, with cities like yours and others who have their own catalogers, she mentors them, she helps them. Her and Leanne, who's your cataloger, if you don't know her, she, they meet on a regular basis. Dia comes at least a couple times a year and sees Leanne in person and supports, so they collaborate and support long-term. Dia is also the um district's, the whole, the whole area's um Sage liaison, and Sage Sage is our library consortium. If you haven't been using your library card, and you should be, we're, our library catalog is seventy-seven libraries on all of Eastern Oregon, and so Dia does a lot of that communication and is on the Sage Council and uh make sure that our district and our county in general is um part of that and an active part of that. Um, and the third person that Mr. Smith also also alluded to is our Early Literacy Outreach Coordinator. And she, that was originally a grant-funded with the mission and vision to reach every kid in Yumitila County from ages zero to five with early literacy skills before they start kindergarten. And so Monica does that, and with that now comes out of our budget, uh cuz it's super important. And so she goes into daycares, in-home daycares, um Head Starts, E S D, classrooms, preschools, libraries if they want her to come, and does storytimes and brings book boxes and trades them on a regular basis. So the original idea was really anyone that wasn't able to get to libraries for whatever reason, you know, daycares can't drag fifteen kids necessarily to storytime or um all sorts of reasons. She she does go to libraries now if they want her as well. And like, the city of Hermiston gets a great deal of, I mean, the residents that aren't paying the district into our tax base, a great deal of value from Monica. She sees um fifty-three sites on a regular basis, and twenty-two are in Hermiston, and many of those are like two classrooms a day. Like, when she comes over, there's a morning class and an afternoon class, so it's even higher than twenty-two. So the city even is getting a great deal of benefit from Monica's services, and she's really excellent. Tomorrow, she's doing a training over here, cuz the E S D, which is even bigger than Yumitila County, has this huge new project, and they really wanna get books and train parents to be reading in the home because, you know, if they, all they ever do is bring in the storytime, that we know as parents, that's not enough. Like, you know, parents need the skills and to feel like they can read. And so Monica is gonna train the trainers of all the E S D teachers in the entire region, train the trainers so that they can then go and um and teach the parents. And I actually went to Mexico and bought a bunch of books for the E S D that we're gonna actually send home in Spanish for families. So those are some of, some of those kinda things. Um, additionally, out of the twenty percent, again, Mr. Smith alluded to this, but we do pay all of the Sage fees for that consortium, for the eight thousand and some, between eight and nine thousand people that are in rural Hermiston. We pay the LEO fees, which are all the digital things that you should be using, Libby, and now magazines are on there. Um, we pay for the courier, the third-day courier, so that we can get books between those seventy-seven libraries. Um, and then we coordinate and found funding to cover every single kid in Yumitila County for the Dolly Parton Imagination Library. So that's where they get a free book from age zero to five. All they have to do is sign up, and there's links on the websites, and um E S Ds have some of that information too. So if you know kids in that age that aren't getting it, they should sign up. So that's with our twenty percent. The other eighty percent that comes in on our permanent tax rate, we just send straight back out to the cities. And so, again, Mr. Smith alluded to a lot of this. I don't necessarily need to rehash it. There's been various ways that there, that the district board has has allocated it over the years. This was before my time, as he mentioned. Um, I'm the new director. But they wanted a formula that it was least explainable, which it is. And the reason that Hermiston is not in the first part is because the base threshold criteria, if anyone that started business knows that it costs the most just to get up and running and have a building and lights and a staff person. And Hermiston already had that. Hermiston already has a well-funded, from your own city taxes and your own budget, Hermiston has that, a well-funded building and staff and all of that. If those eight thousand, eight thousand-plus people didn't have that and had to have a building of their own, like all the other eleven cities do with no other additional funding, then of course, they would be in that part. But, and it's, it's not perfect. We know it's, even though it's sort of explainable, it's still caught sorta clunky. They've tried lots of things, um but it's the best that they've come up with. And the the district board, who I neglected to mention, one of my board members, it's a five-member board. They have the real power. This Kathy Thu, she lives in Echo. She's one of my board members. Decided that this was the fairest, best way that they can, that they could figure it out for now. Like I said, over the, over time, there's been various ways that they've tried tiered systems and different things, which all have their flaws, and it's just a set amount of money. It's not a super high permanent tax rate, and so, you know, this is the pot, and it goes, you know, you gotta, they're just trying to figure out how to best use it. And they, the board, I will speak for the board, um, they are very, very proud that every incorporated town in Yumitila County has a library, Adams, Ukiah. And you know, there's different philosophies about that, but I will tell you, those tiny towns, those kids in that town, they can't get to Hermiston or Pendleton, even though it's only eleven miles away. And so it's really important to us that those cities are able to have their doors open and lights on. Adams has forty kids in that library after school every day. Those kids couldn't get to Pendleton, even though it's not that far away. That's, I didn't even know there's forty kids in Adams. I mean, that's, it's pretty miraculous, so. That's kinda the why. It's, it's not perfect, and, you know, I'm sure this formula won't be forever. But for now, that's the best that we have. So that's the why. Do you have other questions for me? Yeah. So we get taken just over, my projection is just over three, you mean for, for me, just over three million. Our tax, permanent tax rate is three-point-six or seven or eight, so like thirty-eight cents on a thousand dollars of property taxes. And of course, as you all know, that come, that also is very, that's my best projection. And this projection for you guys is actually quite low. I just did the, and that's sort of because, as Mr. Smith mentioned, the population numbers are very hard to come by, so these are, these are our new ones, but they're old. I mean, and we can't get newer ones for a while, and so that's what I have to go with. And then also, the total distribution there is also low. That's not what I'm projecting, but I had to do this six months ago, so I just used the last one. So the new projection is over a hundred and fifty, a hundred and sixty, so that is a bit low. But again, it's just to see how the formula works. So I take in about three million, but two, two million of that-ish goes directly back out, more than two million goes straight back out to the the cities. Yeah.
I do gotta say, as a youth in this town, I spent a lot of time at our library.
Good.
Cuz we didn't have a lot of stuff at my house. Um, I'm glad to hear that the forty students have a place to go, to stay off the street and learn. Um, I do gotta commend you guys for that.
Counselor Kelso?
If the uh distribution model was to go to a per capita amount across the entire district, what would the ramifications to the district be of that move? So let's say we made it as fair as possible in terms of number of.
Every person got the.
Every, every person was worth this amount of money, and that's what each library got.
So as I said before, I wasn't, I wasn't around when they did this, and I have not looked at those numbers. So, I mean, that's something I would have to to look at and. And by district, do you mean like each separate city? What would the effects be? I mean, it would be a different, obviously a different formula. I can, I mean, just, I'm sure you can all surmise just by looking at that, that we're trying to help those tiny libraries.
Right, and I guess my question is, what would the practical outcome of that, that change in direction be?
I mean, it would probably mean more money for the libraries, the tiny libraries and less money for the tiny libraries and more money for the big libraries. And I think the prob, I, I can't say hundred percent because I wasn't around and I don't, I haven't really explored that. But just standing here off the top of my head, I don't know that like an Adams and a Ukiah could survive on that. So, and you know, again, that's some philosophies. I mean, let's just put all the resources in bigger libraries. That's certainly discussions that have been had, but my current board is very passionate about having a library in every small town. I mean, Ukiah, if you haven't been there lately, it is cut off people, like they aren't getting anywhere else, those kiddos, so.
Thank you.
Yeah.
I want to lead off by saying thank you. Thank you for being willing to come up.
Yeah.
I know I, I personally even asked, you know, to want to hear from you guys. And so I appreciate it throughout the course of this conversation. I learned a lot.
Good.
Um, and especially knowing, I guess, how the district was set up and I guess, you know, the taxpayers, you know, opting in or opting out. Uh, it gives me a different perspective on it and, and just quite frankly, I mean, I'm from Weezer, Idaho. It's a small town, about four, five thousand. And so I, I do also have a passion for, for the little guy getting, you know, having the same amount of resources or at least having an opportunity. And so um it makes me very happy for your guys' existence and for what you guys are doing to help all the smaller communities around here. I have a passion for our city, uh and I want to safeguard our city. Uh, but you know, knowing exactly, you know, what you guys are doing, how you guys are doing it. And just even the fact that we're not even opted in and we, we have about eight thousand that you guys are still willing to to, to give us for that. And so I think my, my viewpoint on that's changed a little bit. And so uh I appreciate uh the board and, and yourself as a director. So please, if you can, pass your comments on to your board. Uh, they're, they're doing a great job and I think their mission's in the right spot. Making sure that those rural, small communities have something as well.
Thank you, and I would just say I'm always happy to come or talk to you individually. Um, I, I really do like that. Um, and as you were talking, that reminded me about the population thing I wanted to say. One change with this formula was, was we went to zip code, which I do feel like is much more accurate than we, than they previously tried to take like incorporated and minus unincorporated and it was very confusing and much. So the zip code, and you will see like Adams has like nine hundred, there's not nine hundred. And that's, so some of those farming zip codes really did expand, but I do think that's appropriate. Like if they're on a farm fifteen miles out of anywhere, Adams is their closest, like they should be counted in that. So I do think the zip code, you asked that earlier, so. I, I can't speak too much to the prisons. I think Mr. Smith spoke pretty well to that. But I do think the zip codes are, again, they're not that eas, still not that easy to get. But I do think it's, it is a good measure of, of how, where we get those populations.
Thank you for your time.
Yeah.
So I, I, I have one, a couple of questions.
Yeah.
So in regards to the way that this is, that this is done, Hermiston is the only one that has its own
Correct.
self-funded library.
Correct.
And because of that, we are expected to, to serve those in our zip code un, un uh paid for, basically. Um, which, you know, I, I, I get it, but it, you know, at the same time, it seems, you know, and, and the thing was, is that uh, you know, up until a few years ago, Pendleton was bigger than us and
And I will tell you, Pendleton is the other one that took a hit in this new formula. And I can give you some history for that too. Pendleton used to get up, much inflated because again, when, when the district was formed, Pendleton was like the library and the rest were branches. And then even after the district, we gave them a bunch of money beca, extra, because they were the, they had all the reference books. Well, that's dead, right? I mean, there's, people don't need the reference section anymore. And so they took a hit because of that in this new formula, which they also aren't thrilled about. But, but their city does pay into our, our taxes. Um, and I will say, uh, to your point as well, um, I mean, we're not tracking them and we don't really want to. But those other, those, your rural residents um also are welcome and do go, I know, to Stanfield and Umatilla. And I mean, they're being served in other places too, besides Hermiston. I mean, it's a shared thing. We're all working together. We, we, we want to do that, we do do that. Um, and some of them might live closer to Stanfield or Umatilla and that is more convenient for them, you know? And we're not, we're not, we, we, we think we're stronger together, so.
Any other questions? Ma'am?
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Okay, seeing none. Need a motion to authorize City Manager Smith to sign the agreement for the library services as presented. For unless there is a, unless there is a motion to do something different.
I move to approve.
Second it. Okay, seconded by most everybody. Uh, my, I think I'll give it to Ms. Linton on that one. She sounded closest. This is my good ear, I think. Um, and it was motion by Counsel Brown. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimous, unanimously. Wow. It's easy for you to say. All right, go forth and conquer. December twenty twenty-four, monthly financial report. City Manager Smith, I have a feeling you're gonna hand off. Ms. Palacios.
Thank you.
Daslas.
Yeah. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. Um, tonight I'm presenting the December thirty-one, twenty twenty-four um budget to actual financial reports. Um, we are now fifty percent of the way through the fiscal year. Technical difficulties. Um, the first slide is the Hermiston U R A. Uh, property taxes are, are have been received through, most of the bulk of them come in through uh the end of November. And then we have a little bit of slough, for lack of a better word, uh that come through the end of December. As of the end of December, we're at hundred and fourteen percent of budget for property taxes collected for the fiscal year. The, we have a project going on, the, in the North Hermiston U R A. The project is on schedule, I believe that's North First Street. Aspen. Um, that project is on schedule and crossing design for the Hermiston drain is underway. Um, as I noted in the beginning of my presentation, we are at the sixth month of the fiscal year. Monthly revenues are under projections by about a hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars. This is primarily due to some grant funding that we haven't received for that s- street study that we did. Um, and so, uh, but property taxes are on target. We're at ninety-eight percent as of twelve thirty-one. This is consistent with the past three fiscal years or on average uh for those three years was ninety-five percent. Monthly expenses are over projections by uh eight hundred and fifty-one thousand. Again, I would remind the council that this is when compared to projections, not to the budget to actual for the current fiscal year. Um, but that's primarily due to some H P D leases and upfitting that is not yet incurred. Those will be towards the end of the fiscal year, so you'll see a larger number coming in for that. Five departments are over budget when compared to projected. That's city council, transportation, parks, public safety center and court. Um, city council, uh, that's compared to projected, but all the, those departments except for city council and parks are over budget. Three point nine percent for the city council and that's primarily due to annual trainings that um we've paid for and earlier in the year, yep, and have occurred through the end of December. Um, parks, we broke a mower, so we had an unexpected and anticipated repair there. So that's why we're five point eight percent over and uh so we'll be dealing with that. And that was taken care of as part of the supplemental as well, so. Observations for utility and street funds. The street fund revenues are still under projections due to timing of S T P pros, proceeds. We actually did receive those in January, so you'll be seeing that catch up in this next month. Utility fund is approximately one point three six million over projected revenues. Um, this is primarily due to increases in services, approximately a hundred for, for the same period for fiscal year. When compared to twenty twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four, we just um passed the annual C P I adjustment, so that's part of that. And then uh we've had a large use of our septic tank services by one of our partners. Um, and so that has, is starting to um slow down, so we won't see that. You'll see that smoothing out for the rest of the year. When compared to budget, though, we are three point eight percent over expectations and within our revenues. So that's a good thing. Observations, H E S is a hundred and twenty thousand over projected expenditures, but when compared to budget, we're meeting expectations and we're actually nine percent below what was budgeted for this fiscal year. The regional water fund is a hundred and twenty-eight thousand under projected revenue. Um, but revenues are meeting budgeted expectations, they're right online at fifty percent, so we're doing okay. And this is the part I turn back over to Mr. Smith.
Yes, so uh work continues on design for the Geren Harper Road realignment. It's actually the well number six. Um, uh backup power generation uh project is complete. The, the chlorination structure design is going to be beginning here soon. We'll put that out to bid along with the design for the uh well number four controls project. And um yeah, the Gladys and Main Water uh line is effectively complete, uh just paying a couple of final bills. Just at the airport, the hangar replacement, uh the plan's been submitted. Uh, just waiting on building permits. We're gonna have the building uh delivered on site here in the next month approximately. And we should have the foundation completed uh the end of March and soon we'll have a hangar uh up and operational up at the airport.
Then for our remainder civic projects, again, the library, they've, there, there's just a few small items of demolition. Uh, they've started framing and they're starting, they have replaced now the concrete that was taken out to do some plumbing work under the slab in the basement. Um, the Harken Rider, I think we've maybe have one punch list item left, but it, we've been able to use the, the room. We have occupancy permit, so we'll have to schedule a time when the council can go walk through and see the facility. Uh, the I D, I T build out is also completed. Let's see, barns are completed. The arc, there's a little bit of, the, the major portion of the concrete's done. They're gonna do a little cosmetic work to uh make it look a little nicer. And then um public safety center is going full speed. They've been doing demolition in the main part of the uh public safety center. Um, all of the, all of the fire uh apparatus is located elsewhere and all of our staff is uh located elsewhere except for our record staff. They're functioning in what was used to be the court uh facility. And that is uh been segmented off, so it's safe for them and um and we will, um, they were just doing the final pieces of the hazardous materials removal. And so probably next week, uh, we'll be able to do uh more of a walkthrough and, and see what the demolition's looking like and and see as they start, uh, start to build back. So we're happy with that and be happy to answer any questions.
Okay, council comments, Counsel Brown.
I just wanted to, again, the projection, I, I don't know when the dates are again, uh in particular, just for the library.
Uh, we're looking at fall.
This fall?
Yes.
Awesome, thank you.
Counsel Litten.
And right now, say that our balance is in December twenty-four is eight point eight two. Uh, for our minimum fund, it is, but we have six point nine million dollars extra in our general fund.
That's, I mean, extra, I wouldn't say extra. That's our, uh, it's above our minimum reserve. We want to always keep a certain amount because we need the cash flow to make sure we're paying payroll and all of that. But because we just received all of our property tax in November and December, that means our minimum res, our reserve goes way high. And then we spend it down until November of next year. Then it goes way high and we spend it down. So that's, I mean, yes, we have um a lot of reserve, a lot in our reserve, but it's not extra. It's, it's planned and it's budgeted.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Roberts.
Uh, mine's more of a comment. Uh, you said you were gonna do a walkthrough of the public safety center. Obviously, I, I have a warm place for, for the P D and, and, and my heart. So uh if I can get an invite to that, if you know when, uh, if I can make it, I'd love to walk through and just kind of see what, what the shape that
Well, I, I mean, we, I will, I mean, I think we'll shoot for both a walkthrough of the library and the public safety center at some point during construction. I, I need to get with the contractor to make sure, I mean, a one or two person is okay, but when we start bringing more people and so
Yeah, no, I, I agree.
But we'll, if there, I definitely want to get the council in to see those in the, I mean, it's always fun to see the big change, right? You see how, how it looks deconstructed and then bring it back. So we'll, we'll definitely do that.
Okay, thank you. Counsel Hayward.
Um, on that, if you can, uh pictures are even better for us too.
Yeah, actually, I, I, I have been in, learning to use the contractors uh software and pull pictures out of it, so I'll, I'll be getting, try to get some more.
Any other co, uh, council comments on the monthly financial report? Seeing none, any public comment? Mr. Rose? Okay, uh, so can I get a motion to accept the December financial report as presented?
So moved.
Been moved by Counsel Roberts, seconded by Counsel Meyer. Roll call.
Yes.
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 Motion passes unanimously. All right, committee reports. This is the time for city committee and liaison reports. Do we have any to speak of? Counsel Roberts.
On the twenty-second, Mr. Rose was kind enough to meet with me and, and uh, and the rest of the committee. And we talked about uh color scheme and wall art, I think, is what we looked at. He brought in some, uh, some neat color swatches and I think we were all really impressed. Um, it's gonna be a very bright and fun and inviting uh space. And so I'm, I'm looking forward to, to seeing that take uh, uh, take its course. He talked about that uh we're down in circulation right now a little bit, but uh because we don't have a ton of books in the library right now, that's really not anything of, of concern. Uh, what I did uh think was neat is that I think he said they had seven hundred uh books um that are being checked out, seven hundred, something like that, that are being checked out to the other libraries uh through the, the system. And so I think that's a testament that uh the, the selections that they chose to keep in the library were, were very wise because they are, are being checked out and used throughout the region. Um, got some openings, so be doing some interviews soon and hopefully uh gonna be hiring some people. And uh, construction seems to be uh on track. They got some more concrete to pour and some electrical and plumbing uh stuff that's moving along. Uh, most of the studs are up, uh but uh everything seems to be uh on, on, on target. So uh again, just looking forward to seeing that when it uh gets completed.
Any others? Counselor Kelsel.
Yeah, thank you. Um, it was my privilege to attend my first um Hispanic Advisory Committee meeting on the twenty-first. And uh, it was, I learned a lot. It was great. We had a, a presentation from Jillian um about the Hermiston Municipal Court and uh I found that very interesting. And um, we also went through a goal-setting session, the members of the committee did. And um, they mulled around some ideas that I think are very promising. So I'm excited to be a member of that committee and, and um, I think they're going to do a great job for of that committee, and, and I think they're going to do a great job for the Hispanic population of this town.
Excellent. Council Litten.
I am on the cab, and we had one individual, a very nice young lady, that came in and it worked, it's working out really good. I, I enjoy being on there to, so that we can help young kids. Sometimes it's not a fault of their own, but they just get caught up in something minor. And, and also the officer, and I hope I'm saying his name correctly, Kobian? Kobian. Enjoy having him there, working with him in there. He's really good at what he does, and I think when you have someone like that, and also the, excuse me, the previous person that we had, we have people in there that care and want to help out the children, so that they can, you know, continue and if, work or, and stay out of trouble, if, you know. So I think it went really well. Can't give details on that one.
Yeah, to add on that, it was my first session, going to it, didn't know fully what it was. They actually informed me what it was, even the officer did. It was really great, and I think it's a great service that we're offering the community.
Any other committees? We had a public infrastructure committee earlier, and obviously we went through everything that we went through, a little bit more detail, as Council McCarthy pointed out, so.
Mark said.
Yeah, what Mark said. All right, any others? Going once, twice, okay. Mayor's report. My, my chance to say, one, goal-setting process, we, we accomplished that, you guys did. It was really great working with everybody on that one. I think we got a lot accomplished in really a short amount of time. I think that's the fastest one we've done, so we got out a little bit early, yay. So there's some, some good stuff coming, coming our way. I think we're going to do well with, with everything. Also had the opportunity to, as several other members here was able to, just this week, city, League of Oregon City's City Day at the Capitol. We had a chance to interact with some of the lobbyists, some of the, and some of our legislators. Great conversations, you know, we, it's always nice to, to connect with those folks. You know, some, some folks have mentioned the fact that, you know, in other places they've worked, that, you know, that, there's a big disconnect between the local, local government and our, and the state government, and we are very fortunate in that our, our, our legislators for our region are very active in taking an interest in what we have going on here, so I am very, I feel very fortunate that we have that available to us. And let's see, last, last thing. I have an ask of all the ca, councillors. One of the things that I would like to see us do is, in the future, speaking of regionally, we have very, a, a large number of cities, or we have a number of cities that we partner with throughout the, throughout our region, and I would challenge some of you guys to go to some of these other city council meetings as time, as time allows. You know, our, you know, Yumitala, Stanfield, Echo, Pendleton, Helix, all of the, all of the city councils in the area, I plan on doing that myself, as, again, as time, as time allows. So please, 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 if you get a chance, take a look at when they are, and be, you know, the whole idea behind this is, is to see what, what's, you know, what's, what's important in some of these other communities, so that we can, you know, you can bring that back and, you know, maybe, you know, shared, shared information, you know, is, is huge. To me, you know, knowledge not shared is knowledge wasted, so if we can get that from, from the other folks, if we can see what's important to them, and how, you know, we either can help, or maybe, you know, we've got a shared problem that, that we can collaborate on to, to get, to get to a solution. So I, that's, that's my ask of all of you guys. Okay? All right, council president report.
Well, thank you. I just want to echo a little bit about what you said about the, attending the other council meetings. Some of the things that I've been allowed to learn through attending events with the League of Oregon Cities is even people that are outside of our county conduct business very differently than we do, and, and to a point where like, it almost feels you do it that way, but mainly because this is all I've known. So I encourage everybody to kind of learn how all of that goes. Also, I just want to tell a quick story. 2006, my senior year of high school, Lewis and Clark High School in Spokane, Washington, I starred as Mr. Salt in Charlie and the Chocolate Factory. And just before our next city council meeting, Hermiston High School, we'll be performing Charlie and the Chocolate Factory, opening February 7th at 7:00 P M., so I encourage you all to go see that. I will not say if I was better or not.
We will.
Did you see him in Spokane?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
No. Okay. So, council reports, anybody? Ms. Linton.
Okay. First, I want to thank the police department, and because of their continuing driving through, I see police officers going through my neighborhood often. And also Daniel, what is his job title again? Yes, code enforcement. I emailed him about another area, and he explained to me what was all happening there, so I appreciate that. I want to thank Byron Smith for driving us up. You wouldn't want me driving in an area that I can't, I don't know well at night, so the city won't get sued for me hitting anybody, so appreciate that. And also, as our mayor has said about going up to meet different legislators, which is very important, we went up there asking for different things, and it was really good. They was really, very receptive of what we were asking, and, and appreciate them for what they're going to be trying to do to help out Hermiston in the future.
Council Hayward.
I put a thing on everybody's desk for the gathering for Campus Life. It's on February the 21st. This is a fundraiser for them. Most of this funds go to students that can't afford them, like, they take them, the snowboarding, they provide all the equipment, sea lift, lunch, and other stuff that they do, rafting and everything. This is on the gathering, everybody's welcome and stuff. One other report that I got from some of the citizens in the town, I don't expect an answer right now, just to be on the radar. Several people brought up to me over on the River Trail Park over by the hospital, that there's people camping over there, and it smells, and it looks like there's littering and other stuff. I just bring it to, because they were really concerned about that, that, and also the gate for that area was left open for people to drive in. So I'm just bringing that to attention, because they were really concerned about that, because they like to go down there and fish, and they're like, no, I can't go fish down there. And that's about it.
Council Rome.
I had the pleasure of attending the Martin Luther King Junior Day celebration here at City Hall. I know a couple of councillors, mayor was there, so it was another, another great year to have another celebration like that, and I think the message that Martin Luther King has said is, is more true now than ever, and so it was just a great day to come together for everybody, and I really appreciate it. I appreciate the band being here. I appreciate city manager saying a couple of words as well. I think it's great that we, as a city, are a part of that event, and so I'm really proud of the city for continuing that, now having it here at the People's House, so it's just another great event. And also, as the mayor was saying, I appreciated the goal-setting session. I feel like, because a lot of the work that we've done in the past, the 2040 visioning, things were a little bit more easier. I feel like year after year, it just gets a little bit more fluid, because we just kind of know the overarching goal of what we're trying to achieve, so I appreciated all the council, their input. I appreciated being there, so shout out to the school district for letting me come to the, to the goal-setting session, so that's all I got.
Council Roberts.
Going back to League of Oregon Cities at, at as well, and that was my first trip down there. It was actually my first time inside the state Capitol. I've driven by there so many times and had never gone in, so that was kind of exciting. Councilor Hayward's comment about the trails and, and the camping got me to thinking that there are a ton of bills that are coming up before the legislature that have to deal with the unhoused and, and changing some of the regulations that came in, in 2021, I think it was. There's also bills coming up regarding recreational immunity that I think are, are going to be important, and so encourage you guys to take a look. You decide for yourself whether to, to support or not support it individually. I can tell you that there are some really good things that are being proposed that are going to help us, I think, actually tackle the problem in a meaningful and compassionate way. And so, but there are, I think at the time, there were over 2,000 bills that had already been filed, and there were at least 2,000 more waiting, so we'll wait and see what actually comes before the legislature, but if, if we feel strong enough that we can support any of those measures, just have those on your radar and, and kind of stay, stay informed on them.
Council Kelso.
Yeah, thank you. A couple of Fridays ago, in the evening, late evening, early morning, I had the opportunity to ride along with our police department. It was my first ever ride-along with any police department, and I just want to say how very impressed I was with the officers and their professionalism, their, their detailed knowledge of our city, and most of all, their empathy to people who clearly were not having their best day. So I, I, I cannot express enough how grateful I am to our police officers of our city and, and what they do, and I'm just going to name them, because they were great guys and I had a great time with them. So it's Corporal Flato, Officer Zumwalt, who had to put up with me in his car for four hours, Officers Ramirez and Knuckles, and Knuckles has the coolest cop name ever, in my opinion.
Officer Susten, the ball.
Oh, okay, well, we all have our favorites, I'm sure. Next, I would like to thank the Yumitala County Fair Board for inviting the city council to their event, their recognition dinner. That's my second year in a row. The first year I was invited because I volunteered to livestream the, the youth showing their animals, and I just want to say to our city that I think dollar for dollar, that's one of the best events that happens in this county for youth especially. The youth development that happens there and is not always seen is incredible, so if we ever have the opportunity to support the fair in any way, I highly encourage that. The other item that I would like to, to say is that a Hermiston Education Foundation auction and dinner event is coming up on this Saturday, and tickets are $50 and are available at the door. Every dollar goes directly into the classroom, and they're having crab and beef, so I'm very much looking forward to that event. I would encourage you to attend if, if you can. It's a fundraiser, again, for teachers who make requests, and those dollars do go into the classroom. The last thing is that I would like to congratulate the Hermiston Amateur Radio Club for a successful Winter Field Day event that they had up at E O Tech, where they operated on battery power for much of the time, and were able to throw up an antenna over a couple of light stands and communicate with Alaska, New York, Florida, San Diego, and we even got one contact in Italy, just outside of Rome. So the purpose of that event is to demonstrate, well, there are several purposes, but one of them is to demonstrate the effectiveness of emergency communications, it's should something bad happen in our city, knock on marble. Then that club and that group of people is passionate about being able to communicate with other entities around the state and the country, so I just wanted to put a plug in for that. Thank you.
All right. Your last one, Jack. Good to go? All right. All right. Youth advisory report. Come on, dazzle us. Yes, please. Or you can do it from there. Yeah, you can do it from there.
Because it says bad connection, so that's why I was...
Wherever you, we can hear you the best.
Yeah, okay, so first of all, special thanks to Mr. Smith and also Mr. Davis, who drove us at 5:00 in the morning to Salem. A lot of energy drinks and coffee was involved for all of us. We left at 5:00 in the morning. A lot of us got up at like 3:00 in the morning to get ready, but it was a very opening experience. We got to meet with other youth advisory councils, and it was very inspiring what they were doing. I think it was Eugene's Advisory Council, and I'm not quite sure what the other one was, but it was funny, because coincidentally, they both had the same idea to ban flavored tobacco in their cities, and they learned that they could possibly work together to get that goal accomplished, and it also gave us ideas in order to improve our own youth advisory council, and also just try to see where we can go, now that we're a little bit more established. I mean, I am one of the original members from when this first started. I started doing this my freshman year, so I would like to see a little more come out of youth advisory council, and I'm excited to be inspired by the other youth advisory councils. Anything you'd like to add, Rebecca?
Well, I was excited to see you guys there. It was, it was nice seeing all the, all the different advisory councils. There was, there was a lot of energy coming from that group. You could almost feel it. And we're, they were in the front of the room, and we were towards the back of the room, and you could just feel their energy, so it's really nice to see you guys getting involved, being able to create those connections, both with, with Salem and the other councils, so use that to your advantage, get, come up with those good ideas. Make us proud. I know you are. All right, Mr. City Manager.
Just two quick items. I, I had a meeting today with Mr. Davis and talking about ideas of what we can do to, to kind of go to the next level with the youth advisory council, so we'll be coming forward with some more of that. And then a number of you have mentioned the kind of legislative items. I don't know, I'll have Lily send out again, if you haven't signed up to be notified about the L O C's legislative webinar they do every Friday at noon, you can, they, they kind of talk about the, the bills that most affect cities, and, and, and then they put out calls for help, or, you know, if we need to contact our legislators and so forth. So you can listen to it live, or they put it up on their website, you can also watch it later, or listen to it later, so just wanted to let you know about that. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Does anybody else have anything for the good order? We are adjourned. I kind of like that.